Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Sessions Tuesday, April 16, 2024. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensler, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus, Commissioner Carolyn McHie on Zoom, and public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We also have our County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. We're here till noon, and the first item up is to review the B O C C draft agenda for this afternoon's meeting to be called to order at 2 p.m. Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Edwards. We'll approve the agenda with any corrections, if any. Then we'll have a presentation and a proclamation for Earth Day. Any guests we're expecting, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Eli Sterling of the Possession of Species will be in attendance. Bob Barnes is out of town this week, so unfortunately we'll not have children from Thurgood or from the middle school here.
Okay. Questions on the proclamation? Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. County manager's update follows. Anything we should expect from County Manager?
Not at this time.
Okay. Consent items, we have 3A through F. 3A is auditor item, Accessible Communities Advisory Committee Grant.
Yes, we discussed last time, this is a move to authorize County Auditor to enter into an inter-local agreement with the Washington State Employment Security Department to accept a grant fund of $25,000 for walking path to improve accessibility to the election center.
Questions on the Accessible Communities Advisory Committee Grant item? Nope. Okay, go to 3B. Auditor item as well, purchase a ballot sorting machine with Runbeck Election Services, Inc. This is a new item.
It's new. This item is to move to authorize the County Auditor to execute purchase for a second Runbeck. See that? Ballot sorting machine with Runbeck Election Services for $355,890 plus tax and shipping, and subsequent annual maintenance of $13,390 each year.
Is there any context on timing of this?
Our purchasing policy allows for elections materials such as ballots and other items to be purchased without going through the normal purchase process. However, the auditor called late last week and asked that we walk this item on the board's agenda. She feels that due to the price, it needs approval by the board, and that she asked for it to be expedited because she's concerned if we wait, it won't arrive in time. So she asked that the board approves this item.
And in time is for next election, or is this something we all need in November?
I'm sure did she say what the timing was on when it will arrive?
About, there's about a six-week turnaround.
Six weeks. So she's hoping it apparently for the primary.
Commissioner, and what fund is this coming out of?
I imagine that it's being paid out of the Auditor's election fund.
Stabilization fund?
Not the stabilization fund. She has a fund that is specifically for equipment. Do we have someone from the Auditor's office to speak to this? No.
Not general fund, though?
We can check. It would not be general fund. She has equipment. Oh, and here she is.
Speak of the auditor.
Sorry, I missed the last.
If you could come on up, Auditor, we were just discussing the item about the ballot sorting machine.
So this is carryover dollars from last year. We were actually going to purchase this last year, but we were going to piggyback on a contract, and they kept charging more and more and more. That didn't comply with procurement. So we had to go out for an RFP, so we moved the dollars into this year. This is the equipment. I'm sure everybody's been out there where the ballots go through. Well, we have two of those. One of them was purchased in 2007. I don't know. It's very old. So this is a replacement for that one. This is in our, being paid for out of our equipment replacement fund. So this has been budgeted for quite a while. It's an interesting time in the industry because this equipment is in high demand because more and more people have gone vote by mail since the 2020 election. So we've had an agreement with this vendor that if they, you know, got the bid, which they did thankfully, that they would have one for us to install. So I really appreciate your, you know, bringing it before the board quickly. It's much later than we had anticipated to be able to procure this, but this was budgeted for last year as well.
Questions for the auditor?
This is where our bottlenecks happened, so it'll be really nice to have this in place for the presidential.
Will you have it for the primary, or?
Yes.
Okay. They were saying like six weeks. Is that what you were expecting?
Well, we have to work around them building the mailroom. So we've been talking with facilities to coordinate and juggle and ensure that it gets in when it needs to without being involved or being around when there's sheet rock dust. So we have to consider that as well.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you. Next up is item 3C, Superior Court, one-time exception to personnel policy.
This was the item that we discussed last time. There was a request that we check with to make sure there was no, that we ran afoul on a labor violation or anything, and we did that review, and they're fine with a one-time exception.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
What's the timeframe for the fix so we don't have to go through this? It seems like I hear, now that we've talked about this, I'm hearing from other county employees that are telling me that in their shops, they're set at a certain salary, and they've worked their way up to that salary. And now because of the labor shortage, there's had been some negotiations as new hires come in. And on occasion, a new hire will come in and actually start at a higher rate than the person that's been here for a while. And that's pretty detrimental to morale, if you will. So when is the fix going to be done?
I'll take that one. So I was able to meet with Maria. She's back from some time off, and we were able to connect yesterday. So she has, she said this is under review, the changes to policy. She's going to give it to our attorneys to review, and in several weeks, she'll be able to come back before the board for your consideration. And that'll be what you're talking about, that 5% cap. That's one of the recommendations, policy changes that she'll be bringing back. So hopefully soon.
So is it going to fix what I've kind of laid out?
No.
That's what I meant. So.
So it will fix the issue that's on your agenda today that there's a pretty strict limitation on internal hiring. What it won't fix is what you laid out, where perhaps to recruit someone from outside the county, their pay is set at a higher rate than someone who's been at the county for a few years. It won't fix that.
How do we fix that?
I don't think there is a way to fix that because if we're trying to get talent in the door, we have to offer enough. And unless there's some type of, if we bring someone in, and it's all within the range. If we bring someone here in the range, and someone who's been here a couple of years is only at this part of the range, there is no way to just move them all up to at or above the new hire.
I guess, can we all see that from a retention standpoint, that's not a good policy that we have? Whatever, however it's in place, I mean, that's a killer when it comes to retention. And I hear about folks saying, well, we're going to take another job. Well, we don't have a big pool out there to draw from, so it would behoove us to come up with a solution.
So the solution that the county came up with years ago was to have every new hire come in at the bottom of the range. But we can't recruit people that way. So routinely, we are, to make an offer above the bottom step of the range, you have to get County Manager approval, and we were approving those on almost a daily basis. People who, you know, we need to pay at least what someone's earning, and a little more to make it an incentive to come to Thurston. And, you know, as long as it's within the range, the County Managers approve that within range or within the budget. And hopefully, the manager is considering how that fits within the experience that the person is bringing, the fact that they'll have to learn the new job, and where that fits with other people are in their organization. But people are at various steps in a range, and, you know, they, they knew what the salary was when they took the job. I know that that sounds pretty cold, but there is no way to address that within. And that is not only true of Thurston County. I'd say that that's true of anywhere that someone works.
And Robin, how, when they start with the county, how often do they get range increases? Do they get step increases on an annual basis?
That's a, that's a really good question. It depends on which, if it's union and which range they're in, and if they're classified, are classified employees, and this would be a much better question for Maria or Tara. But it's my understanding that for classified employees, you go up one or two steps in your range, depending on your bargain. Every year, on your anniversary date, you take a step up. And if a range has, let's say it's a six-step range, then it takes you, and you started at the bottom, which very few people do, then it takes you six years to get to the top of the range. And that is so normal in government. So it's, it's all dependent on where you hire in. As Maria was talking to you about the Comp Class Study, one of the recommendations is that we make all of our classification and salary ranges the same number of steps. And that is going to be a big lift for the county because right now we have five range, five steps, six steps, 11 steps. We have a wide variety in our pay ranges. So that's part of the challenge. There's, there is a lot of things that should be addressed about how we hit pay, but someone who's been here compared to someone who's coming in is something that I don't think we can address in policy.
I can't believe that we can't come up with something. Retention. I mean, just think what you lose when you lose somebody that's got, they get five years in. And I just think it's a slap in the face to put somebody next to them doing basically the same job for more money. And that person that's been here a while has to train the new person. So I don't think that's acceptable to say that we can't fix that problem. Now, what the answer is, I don't know. But I don't know if my seatmates care about this issue or not, but I think it's a killer.
We could certainly chat with Maria about if there are any ideas out there. But I would also say that if someone has been here for five or more years, they're generally at or very close to the top of the range.
Well, it could be a year or two years. I mean, it could be a short period of time, and that disparity exists.
That's true.
We need to come up with something. I mean, as an individual elected official, I was sheriff. I had certain restrictions as well, but I came up with different mechanisms. And I used to fight with the board all the time about, well, you can't do that. And I'd do, well, I'm going to do it because I don't want to lose people. And whether that was take the car home, or live within five miles of the county line, whatever it was, I had to accommodate to retain. And because if you lose folks, that's costing you money. You don't see it right off the top. But it's inefficiency and cost a lot.
I absolutely agree with retention.
Commissioner McHie, I saw your hand way back. You still have.
No, I, I think we're just going to have a discussion on this later on, so I'll drop it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I care about it, but I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I think staff ought to come up with some solution, whether that's Maria or whomever ought to at least be able to come back to us and say, well, maybe we can fix it by doing X.
It's not, it's not a discussion that is unique to us. You know, this is a discussion that every organization has. I've had it elsewhere, and it is a hard one. And, you know, the other one that comes up is when somebody gets stepped out, right? They get their top step, and then everybody else got a step increase, but I didn't get a raise this year, and I've been here 20 years. Yeah, but, you know, so it is, it is hard, and I, and then you can't, you can't just create a blanket policy that says, well, if we hire somebody new, and they come in at a step four, everybody else underneath them just gets bumped up to step four. That's not a, that's not a realistic scenario either, but, you know, I would imagine there's maybe some middle ground where if a manager or a director recognizes that somebody's, you know, exceptionally valuable, there's opportunities for, you know, advancement, or, you know, maybe jumping a step. I don't know if those things exist, but sometimes not opening that door helps manage like unforeseen problems.
We're going to figure it out this morning, but I do think somebody could look at it.
As a new county manager, this gives me an opportunity to, while I did meet with Maria, I haven't reviewed how many time to do that and talk with Maria, and to take this concept in consideration. I don't know what changes she has, what the entirety of that. To this item, what the changes they propose is if someone gets a new job, they were capped at with the 5%. She has language, I don't know what it is, but she has language that would change that, and so that's what we would be bringing forward. But we can look at other items as well, and I'll look at the entirety and be able to report back to the commission at a later time as to what those are. And she knows that this is a priority.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good. Let's go to item 3D, which is appointment to the Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. Clerk of the Board is listed as our lead, and we have Dominic Davis proposed. And is this one of the random citizens sort of draw kind of slots?
Yes, as you recall, in last week, one of the two districts, three representatives relocated out of the district. So that seat was vacant. For RCW 3617024, the vacancy must be filled within 30 days by lot selection of the Auditor's Office. On Monday last week, almost 200 letters were sent via USPS to persons drawn at random, and 10 respondents met the qualifications. Dominic Davis was the first into lot draw order. The Auditor's Office did speak with Dominic last week and provided an overview of the commission, their purpose, their duties of serving, and the time commitment involved.
He's ready to go. Okay, great.
You get like a notice in the mail. You're a winner.
I got one. My son was, got one of those letters.
Oh, really?
Probably don't want to respond to that.
Okay, well, that's good. Any questions on that item? Let's go to item 3E, voucher list. That's 3E and 3F. We have a week of April 1st, week of April 8th to voucher list.
These are routine items. New trip voucher list, week, one is 3.2 million over 3.2 million.
I guess my only question here is here from Robin, if there's any adjustments in here for.
No, no tenant improvements in the year.
And then 3F?
Yeah, same thing for 1.1.
Any questions for?
Same, same thing there.
Okay, 4A, Family Support Center Federal Office on Violence Against Women Grant, MOU.
Robin, you want to take this one?
As you heard last week, this is a memorandum of understanding that the county enters into every three years with the Family Support Center. We've been doing this for quite a while, and this enables the Family Support Center to apply for a federal grant award to provide services to women who have experienced domestic violence.
Questions? This is something we've done in the past, correct? Just re-upping the scene.
Yeah, this is like the fourth or fifth.
Okay, I don't see or hear any questions from the board, so let's move on to 5A, CPAD Habitat Conservation Plan Land Acquisition. Andy Defovis, Senior Planner from CPAD to, please for the board?
Yeah, please.
Oh, great. Good morning, Commissioners, County Managers. Welcome. Andy Defovis, Senior Planner with Community Planning. So we're here today to bring before the Board a purchase and sale agreement for a five-acre piece of property in the Tenino area. This is related to the county's Habitat Conservation Plan. The property features Mima mounds, native prairie vegetation. It's located about three miles north of Tenino off Old Highway 99. The purpose of acquiring this property would be to manage it for prairie habitat and wildlife, and to generate mitigation credits for development that's anticipated to occur within that service area. So through our real estate contacts, we have reached out to the seller and have brought forward a draft purchase and sale agreement for the board's consideration. And upon approval of that, we would proceed with other due diligence items to bring the item forward or closer toward acquisition. Let's map the gist of it. Any questions from the board?
Are we not going to talk about, oh.
Go ahead, Commissioner Edwards. This is the one on Angus Drive?
Correct.
Commissioner Edwards?
Are we, that is a location, I guess, but is this in close proximity to other properties that might be beneficial to what we're trying to do?
It is close to other protected properties, so it's adjacent to the West Rocky Prairie property that was acquired by DSW. Yeah, and of another smaller piece that's acquired by Puget Sound Energy for their HCP. So, you know, a five-acre piece in and of itself wouldn't probably be worth pursuing, but because it is adjacent to other lands that are being managed for the same purpose, we're able to jump onto that.
Is there any chance in the future we might be able to partner with someone, probably one of those entities, about managing, how we might take care of that property to keep it at its highest value?
Potentially, yeah. We did just do a request for qualifications for land conservation and management entities to help us with. and management entities to help us with, you know, all the lands that are going to be in our portfolio, but I would say we're, we're open to exploring that possibility.
Especially if you've already got others that are doing the same thing right next door.
Yeah. There would be some logistics to work out because different funding mechanisms and how that all gets shared, but I think we'd be open to, we are open to collaboration and being, you know, efficient with public dollars, so.
If we do purchase it because of the location, can we name it in honor of the Sky River Rock Festival?
That'll be at the board's discretion.
What do you call it? The Sky River Rock, I, I don't know what call it, but I'd like to name it in honor of the.
From the history, from the history.
Yeah, yeah, 168th, they had that big hippie fest.
That's the same spot.
It was the same when I said, well, I haven't looked, but I know that down at the end of Angus Drive, on the other side of the railroad tracks, because on the railroad tracks where the state patrol sat and like watched all the hippies party naked and, uh...
I think that'll be at the board's discretion, so we'll bring that back.
Historic kiosk.
Gary, Gary's probably there. You remember that?
Yeah.
You do? Well, you were working for the sheriff's. You were working for the sheriff's.
It was one of several locations that were a bit rambunctious.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Okay, 6A is information technology, waive competitive bidding requirement for consulting contracts. Sherry Hill, I see on Zoom. Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning. So this is a request to waive the competitive bidding requirement for OpenGov. We, as part of, OpenGov is our, um, recording tool for financial information to the public. And as part of the TC Connect project, we need to integrate Oracle with OpenGov. So the original contract with Oracle included the integration from the Oracle side, and now we need to work with OpenGov to, um, build their side. And since OpenGov is the only, um, vendor of the solution, uh, we need to waive the requirement to go out to bid so we can get this done.
Questions for Sherry? Nope. Okay, Sherry, looks like we're good.
Thank you.
Next item, Public Works, 7A, BNSF Railway Grade Crossing Construction and Maintenance Agreement. And we have Matt Hunsman.
Matt Hunsman.
Matt Hunsman, County Engineer. This is the last piece we need to call for seal bids for the Marvin Road project between 22nd Avenue and Union Mills. The board has already previously approved us to go to, uh, to call for seal bids. We just needed to get this agreement with the railroad in place before we went to bid. This agreement is for a crossing that's just south of Union Mills Road. This crossing isn't, um, is rarely used to the point where the railroad has agreed to abandon, um, the line and allow us to, um, go to construction and not rebuild this crossing. The total amount of money specified in this agreement is for 222,000. 31,000 of that is to purchase an easement to legally cross the railroad tracks. Obviously, we're crossing now, but we did not have a legal right to do so. And then 174,000 is estimated for the construction cost for the removal of the electrical equipment and then 13,000 for the removal of the tracks themselves. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Any questions for Matt? Nope. Okay, are you here for this whole Public Works coming in strong today?
I'll be here for a while.
Yeah, man.
Before we move on to the next item?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I'm, I saw Matt and I just remembered the public comment from, um, that we received about an intercity transit project. I'm wondering if the county manager can provide an update on that today?
Yeah, we can.
Going back to the very beginning.
Yes, Commissioner, we can absolutely provide an update. We'll have, uh, Public Works staff ready to go. I think there's been some questions answered in the meantime.
I think so as well, but, uh, I think it'd just be good since we did have a group of individuals come and provide public comment on that to kind of just give an update. I know you've received some information.
Perfect. So back on item two then?
Okay.
If we'd slot that in?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay, then let's go on to item 7B, Contract Award for Pacific Avenue Pavement Preservation Project. All right, so this item's to award a contract, um, for the Pacific Avenue Preservation Project to Lakeside Industries. They submitted the lowest responsive bid in an amount of 1,609,615. All costs will be paid for using a grant from the National Highway System Program. The project will include a milling fill, meaning we're going to be taking the top two inches of asphalt in between the curb and gutter lines and replacing it. We'll also be upgrading the sidewalks, um, sidewalk ramps or sidewalk ramps and driveway ramps to meet ADA standards and tackle some of those projects that are also included in our ADA Transition Plan. The project limits will extend between Carpenter Road and Union Mills Road. Any questions?
Just maybe one. When you grind that away, that, do you remix and put it down or do you take it away and then use it as a remix?
They take it away to the plant and then they'll use it later as, um, as part of another project, not our project. Okay. Okay, item 7C, Contract Award for Yelm Highway Pavement, Pavement Preservation. Okay, so this, um, item is to award the contract for the Yelm Highway Avenue Preservation Project to Granite Construction. They submitted the lowest bid in an amount of 2,653,441, excuse me. All projects will be, um, as similar to the previous project I was talking about. All costs will be paid for from the, a grant we received from the National Highway System Program. But we also have some, um, matching funds from the Transportation Improvement Board Complete Streets Program, which will pay for some of the ADA improvements that we're going to be making in this corridor. So as with the last project, we're upgrading sidewalks, sidewalk ramps and driveway ramps that are included in our ADA Transition Plan. The project limits on this project extend between Rich Road on the west end to the Chehalis Western Trail where it crosses over, um, Yelm Highway, um, at the Lacy City Line. Okay, any questions on this project? Nope. Keep on going. 7D, Interlocal Agreement with City of Rainier for Sports Courts Amenities.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll take this one. Mike Lohman, Road Operations Manager. This is for an agreement with the City of Rainier to construct four pickleball courts within the Yelm-Rainier-Tenino Trail Corridor. The county will provide $430,000, including park impact fees and, uh, real estate excise tax. The city is responsible for the construction and ongoing operation and maintenance of this project once built. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, ILA, any questions on that? End of a long, toward the end of a long road. Getting there, yeah. All right, thanks, Mike. I think we're good there. Let's go to 7E, Project Prospectus and Local Programs Funding Agreement for SR State Route 507 and Bail Road Southeast Roundabout. Okay, Matt Hunsman, County Engineer. So I think we're all becoming very familiar with this project. This project is, um, part of a regional project that involves the City of Yelm, um, who has agreed to construct a roundabout at Bald Hills Road. Pierce County, who's agreed to construct a roundabout at 702, and Thurston County has agreed to construct a ra, uh, the roundabout at Bail Road. This project, um, includes constructing a roundabout, um, a full-size roundabout. We have 2.5 million dollars, or I should say, there is 2.5 million dollars cur, uh, included in the current biennial budget, the state budget. The state has fully funded the project, so now we have a total of 7 million dollars that we'll be able to obligate once the governor signs the transportation bill, or transportation budget, which is in July. So we are asking, um, for funding to begin the, the pre-design and design phase of that project, uh, roughly amount of 400,000. In order to do that, we need to execute some paperwork with the Washington State Local Programs Division. A project prospectus has to be executed as well as a local agency agreement, as is similar with all of our federal aid-funded projects. Any questions on this one?
Is that going to take place this year?
So we'll obligate the pre-design, so construction won't begin until 2026. Thank you. Okay. Keep on going. Public Works train here, 37F is, uh, local, or Project Prospectus Local Programs Funding Agreement for Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal, Phase One. So this is obligating 2.5 million dollars of federal funding we received through the, I have to look this up every time, Aquatic Organizing, Organism, uh, Program, which is a federal program. So as with the previous project, um, we were discussing, we need to execute a project prospectus as well as a local agency agreement to obligate 2.5 million dollars to go towards the Green Cove Culvert Replacement Project. Questions for Matt on 7F? And 7G is Phase Two, same project? Phase Two, the same project? So, uh, sorry, getting my, I got too many items here. But 7G, Public, um, so Public Works received 500,000 and federal funding from the Culvert Aquatic Organism Passage AOP Grant Program to put towards the Green Cove Fish Barrier Phase Two Project. This funding will pay for the pre-design work, um, to determine the appropriate improvements for the 36th Avenue and Kaiser Road crossings, which are upstream from our Green Cove project. Removal of these barriers will open an additional 1.3 miles of habitat. Washed Up Local Programs, um, is administering these, um, funds and we need to execute a project prospectus as well as a local agency agreement to obligate the funding in the amount of 500,000. Okay, any questions on 7G? Nope. Okay, 7H, Resolution Call for Seal Bids for Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal, Phase One. All right, this is, this is a big one. So Public Works is requesting permission to call for seal bids for the Green Cove, uh, Creek Fish Barrier Removal Project. This project will be replacing a five-foot culvert that previously failed with a 150-foot long, um, prestressed bridge. The 150-foot long bridge will actually be coming in three different pieces because we have to get this bridge through a neighborhood to get it to the stream crossing. So it comes in three different, uh, three different pieces and then we're gonna pull fiber, or fiber, not fiber, we're gonna pull steel strands through all three, um, segments of the bridge, pull it tight, and that's how it gets connected. So.
Always fun to watch.
It's gonna be super fun to watch. As a engineering nerd, this is like as good as it gets for me. So, um, the estimated cost of the project is 9.6 million. 3.7 of that is a Public Works, um, loan, uh, two and a half from the federal AOP grant that we discussed earlier, 500,000 from Thurston PUD, 2.55 million in REIT funding, 200,000 from the road fund, 150,000 from stormwater utilities fees. And so this project, um, will bid it this year. Because of the size of the project, um, it's gonna last multiple seasons, so it'll be up to a year and a half long project. This year, we know at the bare minimum, we need to remove all that fill dirt, um, it's 50 feet tall of fill dirt and open that, um, remove that culvert so that we can meet our agreement with the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife that we would have that barrier removed by this, this fish window. What's the time estimate for like then, the, like, the folks that'll have to be diverted and won't be able to cross? You said it's like a year and a half or something? 15, 15 months, yeah. And unfortunately, it's like, once you remove that fill, uh...
Yeah, what do you do?
We're kind of limited in options to get people around, so.
Dukes a hazard jump?
I suppose that's an option, um, if you tell me to do so. But, uh, fortunately, the detour is only about six minutes long and about a mile and a half long. We recognize this in the inconvenience, but, uh, for the greater good, I think it's well worth it. All right, thank you, Matt. Okay, let's go to, I, last two from Public Works, uh, I, 7I, Resolution and Call for Seal Bids for Thompson Creek, at Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project. Yeah, Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for seal bids for the Thompson Creek Fish Passage Project. This project will replace a 10-foot squash culvert with a 70-foot prefabricated bridge. This bridge has already been ordered ahead of time because the procurement, uh, times to purchase steel bridges is eight, nine, 10 months right now. So we already got that ordered, it's on its way. The removal of this barrier will open over 10 miles of upstream habitat. This culvert will also eliminate, or this bridge will also, um, eliminate road flooding during, um, high water events. The estimated construction cost is 750,000. 500,000 is from the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board, 80,000 from the Salmon Recovery Funding Board, and REIT II funding, um, will be utilized for the remaining funding. Okay, any questions? All right. Last one for Public Works, 7J, Resolution for Temporary Closure of Country Club Road from Country Club Loop to 40th Lane. You set me up perfectly earlier. So Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to close a portion of Country Club to accommodate the construction of the, um, uh, the bridge. This closure would be in place for the duration of the project, which is expected to take up to 15 months. Access to private property will always be maintained. Emergency services will always be able to reach all the private residences, um, around, in the surrounding area. To give you an idea of the volume of the roadway, it's about 267 vehicles per day. I was wrong. Total detour length, I think I told you 1.6, is actually 2.1 and will take approximately six minutes to navigate. A communication plan to notify stakeholders such as local residents, emergency responders in school districts has already been developed. Upon approval of this item, we'll begin implementing that plan. Notice of the closure will also be published in the newspaper, posted on our website, sent out using social media and put on electronic reader board signs in the field ahead of the closure. Questions on the road closure? Nope. Okay, thank you. See you. Next up is 8A, Sheriff Department Item, uh, Purchase of Canine from Aberdeen Police Department.
Yeah. Do you have any questions on this item? Morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Turning straight to you, Sheriff, on this item.
Uh, I believe, so this is the purchase of the canine unit, um, that we spoke about last week, uh, the 15,000. It is for, um, a dog that is currently being used by Aberdeen Police Department. One of their handlers is laterling to our sheriff's office and, um, we are in need of up to three qualified canines this year. I had a conversation in between last meeting and this meeting with our master canine handler, um, who explained to us that this is his number one choice of a dog. So irrespective of the handler coming over, this is the dog that, if he could choose, um, this is the one that he would choose. So I delegated that decision to him and that's what led us to this purchase, uh, this purchase request. In the meantime, we will need up to potentially two additional dogs. And the handlers notified me that the kennel that we typically buy our dogs from right now has one dog that looks okay and there's another dog that would be a 50/50 flip of the coin on whether or not it would actually work out. Like I said before, this is a grant purchase. This is user-to-loose-it money this year. We cannot extend the grant again. And I believe we still have like 30, $30,000 approximately to spend on that grant. And then, uh, the last... And then the last piece of this was that the, uh, one of the conversations that came up that I had was, well, why don't we just, why doesn't the agency, why doesn't Aberdeen sell the dog for a dollar to the handler? And then if we end up needing to use it later on, and that was when I was incorrected, Aberdeen will not sell the dog for a dollar. It is an asset, it is only a two-year-old pup, it is fully trained, we actually trained the dog. We certified the dog, the dog uses our existing vet, so we have all the records to note this is a proven canine. And so, yeah, they basically said that if, if we don't purchase the dog from Aberdeen, they will kennel it at their station and wait for a handler to come, however long that takes. So that was basically the update for the canine purchase.
Commissioner Mihia?
Thank you. Sheriff, is this a grant that you get every year? Or is this something that, like, we apply, you know, we apply for and that gets like once every two years? Or we just happen to get the grant this year?
Do you know?
It varies. The Halloran Grant comes in different amounts. This money that we have this year that we're trying to spend was actually held over from last year, so they don't plan on extending that money that's set aside for another year.
I've seen a Halloran Grant every year for the last at least 10 years.
Yeah.
So it's pretty common for the county to receive.
Yeah, and usually the Halloran Grant, we use it for the initial purchase of the dog. We'll use it to purchase all the additional equipment for the dog, like the, you know, the cars have to be specially outfitted with the AC in the car and the alarms and everything, so in case the car shuts down, it sends off all the alarms and everything so that the dog doesn't perish in the vehicle in, in warm weather. So the Halloran Grant can be used for a number of different things. It does come back, but usually we, we end up capitalizing on it and using it when we need to purchase another dog. That's, that's when things get really expensive, you know, up to the $20,000 kind of, kind of price tag, and we usually try to take advantage of the grant money.
So I'm just kind of curious, like, what, why is Aberdeen not want the dog anymore? I mean, why are they selling it?
Well, they're willing to sell it. They, basically, they don't currently have anyone at their agency who wants to be a canine handler and is qualified. So they're at the point where they've said, we'll sell you the dog for 15,000 if you want it, because then, you know, they get their return, they get their return on investment. But if you, we're not gonna give it to the handler for a dollar for then the sheriff's office to get this asset for free, because...
Their dog guy. So then they have...
That's a separate...
Yeah, we hired their dog guy, so then they'd have to go through maybe like a year and a half process of training a new person, and then, maybe they don't even work with that dog anymore because, you know, that dog doesn't like that guy, or that guy doesn't, you know, so like, it's just, it's a pretty unique situation where we can hire the guy and then maybe purchase the dog, and then we know they, it's already proven, it doesn't always work when you try and marry up an officer and a dog and send them off to training and...
So Aberdeen has basically said, if you do not purchase the dog for $15,000, we will hang on to our asset and just wait and see if someone applies with us who ends up wanting to become a canine handler that we can pair the dog with. It should be also noted that, you know, from the handler's perspective, he's coming over to our agency, he actually starts today. But he also recognized, I think from his perspective, and didn't have an issue with it, he has not been selected for this position. So this dog is being purchased on its own merit and will be given to the, to whoever tests number one for our next canine position. So even though he's coming over, he may not get paired up with that dog. However, he looked at it as, well, if the dog just sits in a crate in Aberdeen and I'll never see it again anyways, he'd rather see the dog go to another handler at this agency as opposed to, you know, literally rotting away.
So you have people that want to be dog handlers, but Aberdeen doesn't?
Correct. And not many. Even, even this year, as far as what we, what I've been able to kind of track is that we have potentially up to anywhere from two to three canine handler positions coming open, and maybe two to three interested applicants.
They have one other dog handler, but it's, it's a drug-sniffing dog, and that's already existent, and then they have other dogs and hopefully stuff like that, so... Any other questions? Commissioner Clough?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Some of mine were answered. I just want to say, it sounds like the dog is a good boy, so that's good. It sounds like we're getting a good deal, and the stars have kind of aligned to make sure that we can get this set up and, and it's just gonna be a smooth transition. But I just had a couple procedural questions, and then one financial question. I'll start with the financial question. How much is the grant that you have, that you're using to purchase the dog? And what will be left over of that grant after the purchase is made?
Like I said, I believe we have about $30,000, and the grant is a special, it's a match grant. So you get the amount, and then you have to also match the amount, which we've been budgeted for in that, that match. That was with the initial grant approval that, I believe, probably the last sheriff came through for the board and got approval. So with that being said, in the grant side of things, we would have, you know, after we pay for the car to be outfitted, all those different things that come through with the initial process of onboarding a canine, and I would guess we probably would have $10,000 somewhere left over in the grant.
Okay.
And then we still have more dogs to purchase at the end of this year. So that will come in, we'll, we'll spend the grant money, obviously, and then we'll, we'll match, we have to match that, that funding, is my understanding of how the grant works.
This grant has to be spent on a dog or related to the dog.
Okay.
It's actually itemized on what you can spend, like for a kennel or this piece or that piece.
Very specific.
Very specific.
Okay, good enough, thank you. And then some of my questions, like I said, were already answered. It sounds like the deputy is starting today, the dog's not physically with him, and we have to wait for the process to be finished for that to happen. Let's see. And then you mentioned, like, a competitive process, so there, it sounds like there are a couple people interested in being a canine handler. Can you just kind of explain what that process looks like as far as recertification? And like, how do you determine which handler is gonna get the dog? What does that process look like?
Well, I can tell you, I went through the process, so I'm not, I can't tell you from the examiner's perspective, but from my perspective, basically, the process for, for the dog handler selection is first going to be, the canines are unique. These are not one of the specialty opportunities in our agency where you can just show up on testing day and say, oh, I decided I wanted to be a canine handler. You will not get selected. The last time we opened the canine handler position, we didn't fill it. So we actually left it, but we did have, I think, one or two applicants, and we chose neither of them because it was one of those scenarios where you really have to provide a track record that you've showed up, you've quarried with the dog, which is where you put the bite sleeve on and go hide in places and run from the dog and help train the dogs. You have to get into the program and show a consistent, because the issue for it is that it is so work-intensive. There is so much that goes into caring for another animal that is with you 24/7, that it's not something that we, that we take lightly as, oh, you know, it sounded fun, so I showed up on testing day. So that alone limits the candidate pool, and there's only maybe one. There's one that I know of for sure who, like, I hear on the radio is out quarrying and outworking every day. And then, so what you'll do is they'll end up coming up, and we do kind of an obstacle course first. So candidates will line up. We actually went over to the old Tumwater Airport, and I think it was a mile and a half run, and halfway through the run, there's an actual obstacle course where you have to pick up like a, like a sand-backed dog and throw it over a fence and start doing all these different things. You have to climb over fences and jump over fences. So first, that's a pass fail. If you are not fit enough, you cannot be a canine handler. And then it goes into an oral board panel, where we bring in canine handlers from other agencies throughout the region, and they all grade based on the questions that the candidate is presenting. And they do that in unison with our master canine handler. They then rank all the candidates, so it's actually an external process. And again, this is one of those ones where I don't personally get involved. We have subject matter experts who are dog experts, and they tell me who the candidate is that they're going to choose.
Okay. And you said you think that there might be like two to three people in addition to this officer that would be potentially interested in that? Or do you know for sure that...
I know there's one internal, and I'm sure he's, I can tell you right now he's going to apply to obviously become a canine handler. There's no secret there, and I don't think it's worth pretending that he's not going to. That makes two that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But you want three, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And that is one big change that we did, I think, at the beginning of the year, in conjunction with the guild, we made it so that the laterals, once you're done with FTO, could apply for specialties, any specialties in our agency. But we also did that for any officer or deputy, excuse me, in, in our agency. Any deputy, once you're off FTO, you can apply for specialties, and the testing process will be the one that selects the best candidates for the, for the job.
And the reason for that, for instance, right, like, let's say that I work at this agency, and I've been wanting to be a driving instructor for five years, and I've been working, I've been trying to, to become a driving instructor. Well, I also have to recognize that, yeah, maybe I've been putting the work in for, for five years, but what happens if Jeff Gordon applies with the agency and says he wants to be a driving instructor? He might, he might be a better candidate even though he's been here for less time. And I recognize that that's not always, that always, that doesn't always feel fair, but I also do genuinely believe that we've done a really, really good job here at this agency of spreading specialties out throughout the department and increasing the number of specialties we have because that's actually been our number-one recruiting tool. Hasn't been salaries, hasn't been any of that stuff, it's come here for the opportunity.
Just regarding process and specialties and things like that, are those civil service?
No.
Okay. But you, but you, it sounds like you give it the same kind of due regard to make sure that there's a tremendous amount of process, so the best person is promoted, not the most popular person.
Correct, yes. And that was, that's personal for me, because again, I worked here at this agency, and I didn't get anything. And I, I remember how that made me feel. I wanted to leave, and I, I did start applying at other agencies before I ran for office. So I've always wanted to make it to where the best candidate gets the job, but also, you know, one of the things we've been trying to fix too is that this agency has a history of, you know, 10 people having 10 specialties. And then everyone else sitting there wondering what they're gonna do for their career. So we have started to, to really intentionally spread things out to people so that they can truly specialize in special areas, and everyone feels like they have a piece of the agency that they get to be a part of and really get to focus on. And so we're actually working with the union right now to create a tiered system where like certain specialties cancel each other out, you can't even apply. So if you wanna, if you're a canine handler and you want to go do traffic stuff, that's fine, but you have to wait until your dog is up, you can't do both. We want people to truly specialize in what they do.
Any other questions for the sheriff? I, I heard the dog was a toy poodle, is that correct, or is that...
No. His name is Mac, I believe, and German Shepherd.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Seemed odd, I just, I read in the newspaper.
Well, they're just easier to load into cars than dogs.
All right, thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you so much, appreciate you guys. And is this going to be, uh, do we know if this is a consent or if I need to come back at the end of the day?
It is not on consent?
Yeah, it's on discussion.
With the board, if you're willing to put on consent?
Yeah.
Everybody says okay, so...
But we have to see the dog, you have to bring him in so we can see him.
I will be sure that, uh, once we actually purchase the dog, we will bring the dog in for a little petting.
Yeah, we'll trade you consent for a petting session.
That sounds like a fair deal. Thank you, guys.
All right. All right, then that's the end of the business items. We have standing items. We will have a public hearing at 3:30, regardless of where we are in the board's agenda, to address a CPED item, Fair Board reapportionment and Fairground Fees. Jeremy Davis, Operations Manager for CPED, to hear, you've heard about this a couple times, but anything else you want to tell us, Jeremy?
I don't have anything new to add on this particular item. I do want you to know I've received no written public comment on this item for this afternoon's hearing at this time, and we have, of course, informed the Fair Board of the public hearing. And I haven't heard whether or not they're going to attend this afternoon. But for the benefit of the public, again, the proposed ordinance that's coming for the board for public hearing today simply goes through and reapportions the existing Fair Board, the 16 members of the existing Fair Board amongst the five Commissioner districts of that Fair Board. 10 members will be apportioned by district with both of those nominated per district, so two nominated per each district. One of them has to be a resident of the district, and one of them can be at-large. I think we've had questions like that before. And then we'll have six overall at-large members, and the board will have the ability to appoint executive members, and will also, of course, retain all of the current youth members that are on the Fair Board. We'll be standardizing all Fair Board terms to four years. They vary from two to four years at this time. We'll also be truing up some of the Fair Board terms that had gone outside of what we have in our code for those terms, and that has to do with their start and their end dates. Our current code and the proposed one has all terms ending at the end of August in the year that they end, and starting in September of the year they begin. We've gotten off track with that a fair amount. Yeah, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have on this item before we proceed with the hearing this afternoon.
So this would be the only board that I'm aware of where we have, like, some slots nominated by commissioners and some not.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just curious, like, if somebody, like, if I've got an opening District Three, but there's at-large openings and somebody applies, like, well, I'm just kind of curious, how will, like, can I grab that person if I want to and make them my nomination? Or will it be, like, well, it really doesn't really matter, right?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm willing to do that, then I could do that?
Mm-hmm.
Or they could drop into the at-large slots, and then the board would consider those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it'll be interesting, we've never quite had a structure like that, but it sounds like it'll work.
Yeah, and the Fair Board actually has been in a structure like this for quite some time. Previously, we had 16 members on the Fair Board, just like we're, we're planning on having now, except we only had, I think it was two, or two or three apportioned per three of the three districts. So we had like nine members apportioned by district, and then seven to 10 or something like that at-large. So it's the same structures we have before, we just adjusted the number of overall at-large members and reduced those down to six, so...
But they were Commissioner-nominated?
The overall at-large ones actually were not officially Commissioner-nominated.
But the, the three...
The other ones were, yes.
Because I don't even remember that, frankly.
Yeah, and it, it's really never been an issue. I think when Fair Board members have put in an application beyond the Fair Board, we're just looking for those members who want to put forward and work for the residents of Thurston County for our county fair, and that's been the primary interest anytime I'm aware for the board to appoint someone to the Fair Board.
We have other boards where we have slots for each district, but they're not nominated by the Commissioner. We just, you know, like, each one is unique as we've...
Each one has ended up unique, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions on the public hearing? All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, that brings us to the end of the April 16th Board Agenda. And it sounds like the only change that we've come up with is removal of the sheriff item to the consent calendar, is that... Unless there's anything else you want to move on to? All the Public Works? I know where you're going with that, Commissioner. Well, we get, uh... Okay. So then, next up is Proclamations and Awards. Clerk for the Board, Ian Davis.
Proclamation for Earth Day is included in your packet. Again, Eli Sterling of the Procession of the Species will attend to accept the proclamation. Unfortunately, we're not able to have folks here from Marshall Middle School. But they also will be mentioned, at least in the county manager's remarks this afternoon. And I'll have the list here, Commissioner Minzer, that you requested last week with some of the Earth Day events taking place around the county.
Questions on that one?
Okay, Thompson had given me a list of events, so I may just highlight those at the point in time where we do the proclamation, so you don't need to worry about that, we got it covered. Okay, any questions on that? We'll go on to...
I just...
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, on the, I guess, the awards section. I've been, so at the Burford Cleanup Event that's happening, one of the volunteers is going to get recognized, and it's Lily Morgan. And so the Boston Harbor Association has asked if we could, you know, do some sort of recognition, and I was thinking maybe a certificate, just thanking her for volunteering, so volunteer recognition.
She's like a super-volunteer type thing?
Yeah, and she gets the, so she's part of, and I'm, I don't remember which group it is, that really gets, signs up, like, a lot of youth in the summer to go pull IV, and like, been very involved in the cleanup for the Burford Park. So they want to recognize the work that she's done and, and...
At the end of the proclamation, I could give you the floor, and you could just say that the board is gonna be presenting the certificate to this person, if you wanted to acknowledge that person in the meeting.
Sure, okay.
And then you could take it with you to the...
Yeah.
Read the proclamation.
No, thank you. Could we do a certificate, like, not for today, of course, she won't be here today, but just before Friday, that way I can take it with me on Sundays. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, very good. All right, Advisory Boards and Commissions?
No updates for Advisory Boards. The timeline for the salary commission is just included in case there are any questions during the Gentry Review.
See, we got Historic Commission, always needing new members, applicants. And then Salary Commission, we need those organized. So it looks like that first one will be filled by today.
Yes.
And we'll have two more, but they'll need to have the specific applications that are outlined there, basically an HR person and a labor representative.
So how would the board like to reach out to, to someone, or, or multiple someones, to fill these spots?
Do you have folks that you're aware of that you want to give us names?
It was my understanding the board was trying to hold back from having a direct influence over who may or may not be selected on, on the... It was my understanding the board was trying to hold back from having a direct influence over who may or may not be selected on, on the.
That's why the auditor has a lottery system for the at-large members or the district members. But, um, for those positions that have to have a specific certification, we can't do those by lottery. Someone's got to find them.
Yeah, so, yeah.
For the organized labor representative, could we reach out to, like, the Ask Me President and see if he has any suggestions? Would that be considered to fit that category?
State employees.
Certainly do that.
You know, and the biggest teachers, you mean, there's, we could identify our, like, five biggest labor groups and send a letter to their chair or something. I would. We also put it out on social media, you know, in particular to that, call that out, and then it'd make it easier for us to kinda.
As long as it's someone who meets qualifications. I think reaching out to the unions and asking the unions if they would come up with a recommendation of someone would be great. Uh, and then someone with, uh, the professional personnel management. In the past, we've had, uh, HR director reach out to, um, State of Washington and see if they could recommend someone from their, what was once the Department of Personnel.
I, I would support that because we've had, we've had so many conversations about the Salary Commission and the pros and cons of it. And I think, I'm not aware of it ever having been fully staffed in the time I've been on the board. I think it would work better, like, some of the concerns that we've had would be alleviated or made better if it was fully staffed with the full complement of the full roster of members that, that, that are contemplated by the, by the, by the resolution of creating it. So I would like to see those try to be filled. And if we take a little bit of effort we haven't made before, who, who would take lead on something like that?
So Leonard, you and I could work with Maria to, to, um, do some outreach for both of those.
And those thoughts, okay. Labor Council would be a good. Central Labor Council, I give you ideas on, you know, that State Employees Union, Teachers Union, those are the two, the hugest ones. And then you've got Ask Me has different groups and that would be good. And there's also the Washington, acronym, it starts with a W, but it's, 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 Washington. Anyway, we could get those.
We, we will put out ads on social media about everything.
Yeah, of course, yeah. We've, we have done that, so that's, that's why I'm just trying to.
Specific to these two seats, no, I don't know. And we'll put it out and it says, hey, we're looking for.
Yeah.
People to sit on board.
I think at one point we did, but it's probably been a while since we specifically, I know two, I want to say three years ago, we did.
A while, but we'll do, we'll do that. We'll do one specific for this.
Thank you. Alright, well, that is a good segue to PIO. Check in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Porter, Communications Manager. I have no specific updates this morning.
Any questions for Megan? Everything going good with your new team?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Megan.
Oh, could we do, you're gonna highlight the events?
I am gonna highlight the events.
Could we, um, post those on social media, Megan, like, just be like, you know, the Board of County Commissioners did a proclamation. Uh, if you'd like to get involved in some community events, here are the events that you can get involved.
You can make a flyer or something so that.
City of Tenino, City of Lacey.
I, I checked to make sure.
City of Olympia, City of Tomwater. You might be off the hook, Commissioner Edwards. Looking at, there's about as four of them on the twentieth, spread all across.
You have Lacey still, right?
Looks like four different Commissioner districts. But you can come out to Fry Cove with us on the twenty-seventh. They'll invite you. Especially, and then Procession of Species. Alright, um.
Okay, just under the, the PIO, I, I just wanna extend kudos to Megan's team in terms of County Government Month and the videos highlighting county employees. And I, I think it's just been a great campaign to sort of see those, uh, get pushed out onto our various platforms, whether it's LinkedIn or Facebook or whatever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And with the expansion and having video capacity, we're gonna be getting equipment next week-ish. The videos are gonna, we're gonna have a lot more videos and it really is helpful to tell the story of the county, so we're gonna get really busy.
Cool, thank you. Alright, uh, next up, it looks like we have a couple of executive sessions. It might be time to take a break before we do that. Let's break until ten thirty and we'll pick up with items, uh, on five, item five on the agenda this morning.
Okay, it's ten thirty AM. We are back for the Board of County Commissioners' agenda setting for Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We've reached item five on the morning's agenda, so we will be moving into executive session pursuant to RCW four-two thirty-one ten one I, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. To shoot estuary restoration ILA, sixty minutes is allotted here. Then we have, and we'll follow that, we can do them together in one block?
I think we should separate them out.
Come out of the session?
That'd be my recommendation.
Okay, so then sixty minutes will take us to eleven thirty, so we'll come out at eleven thirty. And should we?
You think sixty minutes is long?
I was going to say, I think sixty may be too much. I would recommend thirty, then we can extend.
I like that better. Let's go to, so it's ten thirty-one, we'll come out at eleven oh one. And if we'll need to, if we need to extend, we'll do it at that time.
Commissioners, I've invited...
Okay, it is 11:02 a.m. The board is coming out of the first executive session from this morning's agenda setting work session for April 16th. No commissar action is following. We are now going to move into a second executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101I. The same grounds but a different subject matter. To discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. When public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Budget is the topic. We've estimating 30 minutes. Is that going to be enough on this one?
I hope so.
Okay, then we'll stick with 30 minutes. So we will be coming back at 11:33 with an extension if necessary. Commissioner's action may follow. At this point, we're going to stop the live stream. Thank you.
All right, we're back out of executive session. It's eleven forty seven AM. No formal commissary hack-
No formal commissioner action is following. We're up to the last item on the agenda and other commissioner items if we have anything that needs to be addressed this morning.
You want commissioner items to talk about?
If you have one, we've got 12 minutes.
Oh, I do have one.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have not had an opportunity to talk to my seatmate. I'm concerned about this letter from the West Regional Fire Authority. And on the face of the letter, just based on what it says, those were my concerns exactly when we entered into this arena. Between that, school boards, all junior taxing districts.
I haven't seen--
Oh, you haven't seen this? Oh, sorry.
I guess I would like to, we've been asking for the information from DNR about the, like, the breakdown of the cost and after, I don't even know, like, a year and something, we finally received it. And so that's been sent over to the budget team to review, right? But we've been asking for this information of like the breakdown of the cost for like beneficiaries, like what is each cut, you know, like--
I gotta see as I asked.
Well, we've been--
You still haven't seen it.
She hasn't seen it.
Well, I sent it to Nicole.
It was sent out to us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sent it to Nicole?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's something that, you know, we've been asking from DNR for a while now and we finally got it. And so we've sent it over to the budget team to kind of review so we could have like a discussion on it. But, I mean, DNR hasn't really been a cooperative partner in terms of getting us information.
Well, I guess I'm going by what, and you haven't seen this letter either.
I have.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I hate to talk about stuff if we have an old--
It was, yeah, everybody's got it. It was, I'd like that it's just read into the record during our meeting and then, I mean, I think--
My concern is--
As a public comment at the very least.
I raised this issue, I don't know, has it been two years yet? A couple of years, year and a half ago or something? When we first kind of started to delve into solving this particular problem. My concern was fire districts and school districts specifically, but I guess there's other junior tax taxing districts that are affected. And if this allegation is true, $380,000, that's a lot of money to a fire district. And my concern a year and a half ago was, are we going to make them whole if we adversely affect their operating budget?
That's the exact discussion we're having though. Like, I know that that's, you know, that's what's coming up. And, and we've been pretty vocal about that as if, you know, like, you know, I don't, the, the understanding that matrix of how things are funded is way beyond my understanding. But I know that, you know, Commissioner Mensah has mentioned it several times. If, you know, there's going to be swaps and if there's going to be other land that's available, that it's going to be, you know, it's got to go to those trustees. So like, that is a consideration. It's just like, you know, like, I, I pulled up the, the junior taxing district things right now and it says that West Thurston, it's actually $440,000, $440,000 according to DNR. And that, that's a lot of money.
In the school district, I don't even know how much that was, but I think it was around a million.
It's, according to DNR, it's $1.5 million. Tom Water School is $2.5 million.
For what though? What do you, I haven't seen it. It's for, connected to what?
With the litigation.
The timber sales.
Carrot sale?
No, I think it's all of them.
Well, I don't know if it was all of them, but they did this.
Everything in Capital Forest is what my understanding is.
We are only in litigation.
Attached to spreadsheet with the estimated revenue beneficiaries can expect timber sales that are currently paused within Capital Forest. And from those list, sales solicited by Thurston County as being areas you desire to set aside for conservation. The first tab contains a roll-up of all sales and each individual sale tab has the estimated minimum value for each. I'll send this to everybody, but I, I thought we'd already done that.
I don't know. I, this was on my desk, so it's--
They were asking them for to cut other areas, not these areas. It's not just like, we don't, don't cut those and don't cut anything as in, in compensation exchange. That's never been the proposal.
But, but the Rochester School District, when we met with the superintendents just within the month, said they were being adversely affected by this funding source from DNR. And that, what'd you say it was? A million something? And that's a lot, you know, so I don't know what the impact is, but I want to make sure that we make these districts whole if we're gonna do something that affects their bottom line. And that was kind of, I don't know that I got a guarantee that we would, but that was my concern as we entered into this area. So I, I guess everybody has to look at stuff before we have a further discussion because we, we're, we're strapped budget-wise anyway, so. I don't, I don't want to be short in these junior fire districts at all, or junior districts, whatever your school district or fire district. I don't know if we're gonna have to make a decision as a board. I don't know if we're gonna have to hear from council at some point about what really is coming from this. Is this exaggerated or is it real? I don't know.
I, I would, I will likely, you know, it's addressed to me and I'll likely go to the West Thurston Fire Commission meeting at some point and I--
Fire commissioner meeting tonight?
Oh, well, I'm probably not gonna make that one.
I'm afraid I, I'm gonna be attending that.
Well, you're going to that, their meeting?
Well, I go, I go to the fire--
No, I'm talking about going to the West Thurston.
Oh, no, but, but it might come up at a fire commissioners meeting and I'm kind of at a loss on what I might be able to respond to. I don't, you know, so that's why I wanted to bring this up here. You want to go to, you can go to the fire commissioner meeting for me.
I'm your alternative alternate, but I'll, I'll probably go to their meeting, next one that comes up.
There, I mean, I think one thing you can say is it's never been the board's policy that cuts be paused and to, without any, I mean, they have a, DNR has a range of, of areas that they can cut. And we're arg, we're arguing for them to shift their prior, like reorder the priority of cuts, not reduce volume of cuts. Never once have we said, reduce the volume of cuts. It's about shifting the order and reprioritizing, you know, lowering the priority of the older pieces while there's all these new legislative provisos, some of which are allowing for swapping of lands, which keep beneficiaries 100% old. We haven't been selected for those, but there's new money. There was, the last two legislative sessions, there's been new money for that. And meanwhile, they are cutting all of the mature, structurally complex forests in Thurston County within the next 15 months, just about. So it's really just pausing, it's, it's reprioritized, it's reordering the areas to be cut so that we can make, take full advantage of the tools that are in the process of being created. So I just, you know, and again, there are, there are a couple of cuts that are hanging fire right now because, you know, temporarily, carrot and cabbage patch more specifically, but--
I, I, I haven't talked with the Rochester School District yet, other than what I heard.
I, I spoke to their finance director and I mean, she was--
I mean, if, if they have to start cutting programs and kids are kind of left out of the loop because of the bureaucracy, that's, that's my, that's what my concern is. That's, you know, I don't know the actual impact it's going to have, but this is, this isn't what I signed up for. I guess I'll just put it that way. And I don't know if we as a board want to do something to rectify this problem or if we even have the capability of doing that. And I don't even know if the problem is, is as it's laid out here. So I certainly don't want to pull the ladder out from underneath them so they can't do their job, whether it's fire or school or--
I found the breakdown.
So more to come, I guess?
I mean--
I didn't see the letter, so yeah.
Okay.
I should say more.
Could we get a little more information at some point in time with the county manager being able to bring this to us? Okay, put the school district in and fire district and see what it is and the reality of it. Maybe have them come to a meeting because I, I don't want to cause a lot of grief, but I don't want these people to be left not being able to go put a fire out or not hiring a school teacher. All the school districts are getting tight right now. So--
Yeah, for, as far as West Thurston's fire is concerned, you know, it was just last, I, I will say that it was just last year they were looking at laying off like seven people if their levy didn't pass. And, you know, for their, the, you know, regarding their budget, it is, it is very tight. And so like any, any effects on their budget could likely lead to people being laid off within that department. So I mean, I, I, that is something that we should also have in mind.
Well, if we're causing it, we ought to really have it in my opinion. I mean, that, that could give the county commission quite a black eye.
We've been asking for this information from DNR. Nicole was in conversations with DNR last year asking for the information of the breakdown of costs. And it wasn't until they finally came in front of us that we actually received that information. I mean, like Commissioner Mensah said, like, we've been requesting very specific things from DNR and it's, really haven't gone anywhere, right? And we've been asking for the impact of the beneficiaries for a long time. And, I mean, we just finally got that information. And so it's--
I, I don't know where to point, but Hillary Franz is the commissioner of lands. So the buck stops there, I think, the same way it stops here with us as county commissioners. If we do something detrimental to our junior taxing districts. So I don't, I don't know where the solution lies, but we need to do something. What is, what is something? We need to have all the facts. So I hope we can gather up some of those facts. And now it sounds like we've got some, but the districts themselves are the ones, fire district and the school district are the ones that said something about it. They should know where that money is coming from and how much. And in this, here, we've got this one. And if Commissioner Fornier has already talked with the financial people at Rochester, that sounds like we've got that information, the two most drastically affected.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reality is there's no way for changes to not have a short-term effect. I've always tried to craft the things that I've advocated for to not have a long-term effect. But when you're shift, even, even just shifting cut from, because we have this, in my opinion, ridiculous geographically-based trust overlay, when you cut, you go from one cut to another cut, there's different set of beneficiaries. So in the short term, there will be effects. There's no way to change. I don't think there's any way to, to avoid that. I've been trying to craft proposals that over a medium and long-term would mitigate that out and have no long-term effect on junior beneficiaries. That's why I've advocated for the money for the swap, for the, you know, the swapping program, for the carbon program, for the, for the reordering of cuts, all those different things. But anytime you change a cut from one specific place to another, there's an effect. But DNR is arbitrarily deciding. I mean, they, they'll say not arbitrarily. They're talking about, they tried to explain to us how they go about it. But it's not about spreading revenue around. It's about what they think is, well, we just, we have to keep these trees connected and we go, they had that terminology for it where they go kind of, they kind of go like methodically because they cut here so they want to, I can't, they had a more silva cultural, is that the word? They had a more equal, you know, forest-based set of criteria for why they choose to go around the forest and cut from here to there. It's not about, oh, well, Rochester School hasn't gotten any money this, this, you know, the last six months. Let's cut those trees. No, they don't do it that way. So that's why the, the, the revenue stream to any given beneficiary is up and down and up and down. There's no way for us to change anything about what they do and not have some ripple effect on the up and down, up and down. What I've been trying to do is advocate for things that over a longer period of time would not affect them. It may not help them in, in next year, but it should over a five-year or a 10-year period even it all out. Because, you know, I've never said drop the volume and cut in Cal State Forest by 50% or something like that. That's never been a position I've taken and the board's taken, so.
But it's a bureaucratic process getting--
Yeah.
It's changed.
DNR has created this incredible bureaucratic process.
Over like 150 years.
Yes.
And it's tied into laws that were before the state even existed.
Absolutely. So, yeah.
Okay, well, that was my topic. I'm sorry it had to be such a sour apple.
Anything, we're, we're out of time. Anything else that we want to, okay, then we come to the end of the agenda and we'll be adjourned till 2 p.m.